Good afternoon. I will call to order the March 25 meeting of the Minneapolis City Planning Commission. My name is Matt Brown. I serve as President of the Commission. Today, we have a new Commissioner joining us. Alyssa Olson is our new mayoral representative. Also here today are Commissioners Lukey Pierce, Suezy Rockwell, and Ellison. This time, I'll ask that you silence any mobile devices and we can get started with our meeting. Before we begin with our normal business today, I want to mention that today is Jason Wittenberg's last meeting. He has served as staff liaison for about the last 14 years and is moving to a new role, heading up zoning code development. So, we'll still be seeing a lot of him on this commission and wish him the best with that. I know we have Steve Poor here who would like to make a few remarks.
Good afternoon, President Brown and Commissioners. I just want to take a moment to acknowledge Jason's unprecedented contribution to the Planning Commission. I've been with the city longer than him and he's been here since 98. And he's been a manager, supervisor in some form since 2004. He has staffed the Board of Adjustment, the Heritage Preservation Commission, and has been a tireless workhorse at both Committee of the Whole and the Planning Commission. Jason has seen the highs and lows of the commission. He's been on the commission when agendas had 90 items on them and then worked to kind of reform how we brought items to the Planning Commission to make it more workable. He is going to be using all that experience and expertise, including all the public engagement, a real understanding of how this commission works with the public and gathers public comment and works projects through the process. And he's going to be overseeing a new code development section where he gets to make a lot of substantial changes to the zoning code and help implement the comp plan. That sounds really restful. Good for you. Glad you're going to greener pastures. He's going to be replaced by Kimberly Elhawene, who's with us here, and she's been with us since 2008, April in fact, so just about 11 years. So, we're looking forward to that. I just wanted to say a couple of things. Jason, aside from staffing the commission, is still a heavy lifter. He's drafted ordinances, is responsible for a lot of our work on reforming our parking regulations. He has published papers. He's presented at Rail Evolution. I think that's coming up. He's done that. His most recent achievement is he won an award at the Heritage Preservation Commission having to do with the Minnesota Music Center's study in conjunction with Hess Royce. And we look forward to continue to work with Jason. You'll see him here occasionally, probably on this side of the dais, although there may be times when he's able to fill in. But I just want to say, I've worked with Jason since he was an intern years ago and it's been a great ride on the Planning Commission. And I'm really thrilled he's willing to take on this new challenge, working with the code development. And I see we're joined by our Chairman, Councilmember Schrader. So, he'll be working close with the Chair as EMP as well and others. So, thank you for this opportunity to recognize Jason's contribution to the Planning Commission. He's done over, well over 300 meetings. I don't know what the real number is, but it's somewhere between 330 and 300 and something. But he's been just a tireless workhorse on the commission. So, thank you very much for taking this moment.
All right. Thanks, Jason. And Commissioner Lukey Pierce pointed out that it's been 336 meetings over the last 14 years. And also, she notes that it's been all without the benefit of bacon, as he is vegan. So, thanks again, and we look forward to Kimberly joining us at our next meeting. Jason has done a great job of really leading all of the staff. I will say that they're all really second to none and I think have done a good job advising us certainly during the time that I've been on this commission. So, thank you. All right. And we can get started with our meeting. So, our first item of business is to approve the actions from the March 11 meeting. Commissioners may have a motion to approve those actions. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries. Next, we will sort through the agenda. You can find hard copies of the agenda in the hallway. We'll determine which items we will discuss, which will be considered on consent, and which will be continued to another meeting. So, starting at the top, Item 1 is green on 4th at 2949 4th Street Southeast. That is variance related to signage. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on Item 1? Seeing no one, we'll put Item 1 on consent. Item 2 is the Royal Foundry Craft at 241 Fremont Avenue North and 1207 Glenwood Avenue, conditional use permit for outdoor recreation facilities. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on Item 2? You wish to speak on Item 2? We can discuss Item 2 then. Moving along to Item 3, that's the Glenwood Building Expansion at 1015 Glenwood Avenue North. Several applications for reuse of a building at that location. We'll discuss Item 3 if anyone is here for that. Item 4 is the Minicotta Clubhouse in Pergola at 3205 Excelsior Boulevard and 3522 and 1/2 Zenith Avenue South. A few applications related to a clubhouse expansion at that location. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on Item 4? Seeing no one, we'll put that on consent. Item 5 is CHDC Workforce Housing at 815 through 827 South 6th Street, 810 South 7th Street, and 601 Chicago Avenue. Two applications for a new residential building at that location. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on Item 5? Seeing no one, we'll put Item 5 on consent. Item 6 is Water Works Mezzanine Phase 1 at 304, 306, 336, and 420 South 1st Street, as well as 5, 3rd Avenue South. Several applications for a park facility at that location. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on Item 6? Seeing no one, we'll put Item 6 on consent. Item 7 is at 6022 Pillsbury Avenue. Two applications related to an event center. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on Item 7? Seeing no one, we'll put that on consent. Item 3 is at 1030 through 1040 Como Avenue Southeast, 1100 Como Avenue Southeast, and 901 11th Avenue Southeast. Several applications for a new residential building at that location. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on Item 8? Seeing no one, we'll put Item 8 on consent. And moving along. Finally, Item 9 is at 317, 3021, and 3025 East Calhoun Parkway. Several applications for a new residential building at that location, and that item will be continued to the April 29 meeting if anyone is here for that item. So, our agenda as amended is as follows. Items 1, 4, 5, 6, 7, and 8 will be on consent. We'll discuss Items 2 and 3, and Item 9 will be continued to the April 29 meeting. May I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. And that motion carries. Next, we can move on to the Committee of the Whole consent agenda. And Commissioner Lukey Pierce, do you have an update from Committee of the Whole?
Yes. We approved the staff report for the Lake Street Housing Tiff Plan, as well as a Lancelot at 3800 Gerard Avenue North, finding both consistent with the comp plan.
All right. And I will take that as a motion, finding those two items are consistent with the comprehensive plan. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. And that motion carries. Next, may I have a motion to continue Item 9 to the April 29 meeting?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. And that motion carries. Next, we'll move on to our public hearings. And at this time, I'll open the public hearing for the items on the consent agenda. Again, that's Items 1, 4, 5, 6, 7, and 8. Is anyone here for any of those items? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. And Commissioners may have a motion to approve the consent agenda. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. That motion carries. Next, we'll move on to our two items for discussion. We'll start with Item 2. That's at 241 Fremont Avenue North, 1207 Glenwood Avenue North. Staff is Mr. Hanauer.
Chairman Commissioners, for this project, there's the two parcels. One, I'm facing Glenwood, and the other along 2nd Street North. And also has frontage along Fremont Avenue. As you may be aware, there are currently two permitted uses that are operating right now. Royal Foundry Distillery on the south side of the building and the Ladonna Brewery on the north side of the building. What's in front of you today is the conditional use permit to allow two outdoor recreational uses, a cycle track, a minicycle track on the south side, and then a soccer field on the north side of the building. I oriented things this way, and I think it'll be helpful for the presentation, but just give me a second here. Appreciate the conversations I've had with the public and specifically a neighboring property owner at 236 Gerard Avenue North. They've had concerns about what that cycle track would do for their property. That is zoned residential, but it has a commercial or an office use in it. There is no residential use there currently. But with those conversations, it's helped with adding conditions of approval that could mitigate concerns if there was a residential use at a later date. All right. So, again, the neighboring 236 Gerard is about here and 230 here, both zoned R3. This project will meet or exceed the requirements that the neighboring property has expressed a concern about. The cycle track will maintain a five-foot distance from that western property line, 236's rear property line. The lighting will have to comply with our lighting regulations of Chapter 535 for light pollution or light crossing over the property line, and also the height of the light poles. And one of the public comments is from the owners of the Royal Foundry, and they've specifically said that they are not planning any stadium-style lighting. So, they are well aware of the requirements. Noise, we had conversations about that. It's a stated condition of approval that we're recommending that races and/or outdoor activity with the outdoor recreation uses end at 10:00, and that would comply with city regulations. And the applicant added in their email that the last race will take place at 9:50. And there's a specific development standard that a restaurant with alcohol would have to comply with, and that being that they maintain the premises, all adjacent streets, sidewalks, all sidewalks and alleys within 100 feet shall be inspected regularly for purposes of removing any litter found thereon. And then finally, screening. The applicant is proposing a four-foot decorative fence along that mini-track, all along the perimeter of the track, and they are willing with the added memo that we have today to put a six-foot hedge along that western property line here to buffer from those residentially-zoned properties. There's also a letter of support from someone, or a letter of no objection. Here's a rendering or image of the soccer field on the north side. But there's a few public comments. One's a letter stating that they don't have, from a neighboring property owner stating they don't have any objections. But with that, I'll just also add, in one of my last emails with the, someone from the public, that they brought up this potentially being an athletic field. Staff, that is a specified use. This is not, staff does not see this as an athletic field. This is an outdoor recreational use. And you'll see the outdoor recreational uses with breweries and taprooms happening more often with bean toss or just being outside and wanting to be outside and take advantage of the outdoor weather when it is nice. So, we are supportive of this, seeing this as a positive for this area that's kind of developing into a commercial destination.
Okay. And Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Lukey Pierce.
Erin, can you just really quick explain what the difference in terms of usage is between an outdoor recreational use and an athletic field in terms of what the neighbors as well as the owners can expect?
I think, I guess it could vary from the programming of that space, but...
Think are there things that are allowed in athletic field that aren't allowed in an outdoor recreational use area?
My understanding is those athletic fields would be more within the park system and that there would be, that's more specified for that. Correct if I'm wrong, Jason. But then, it's, I will admit to the outdoor recreational use being general and broad, but there's just a lot of things that can go within that category, and the cycle track being the example that's in front of us today.
Okay, so it doesn't impact hours or anything like that, or the number of times it can be used, or anything like that?
No. Indirectly, in working with the member from the public and our staff in licensing, we're stating 10:00, and that's kind of a time period that's often used for winding things down.
Thanks.
And Commissioner Ellison.
Yes. I'm sorry if I missed it. Did you say, what's in this space now?
Space now is, I'll show you both, two answers to that. They are doing their build-out, so there will be a deck that will be on the southern portion of the building. And in the application and as part of their liquor license, the only place for alcohol consumption will be on that deck. That will be there, so that won't be allowed to be on the cycle track. Prior to the Royal Foundry taking ownership, I believe it had been vacant in that it was some iteration of an office use prior to that, or a industrial office use.
But there's nothing in this space where they want to use the recreational facilities, right?
It looks pretty close to what you see here today. But the beautiful vision is that.
All right. Any further questions of staff? Hearing none, I'll open the public hearing on this item. I'd like to give the applicant an opportunity to speak first if there's someone who'd like to speak on behalf of the applicant, and you can come to the microphone, state your name and address. Let us know if there's anything you'd like to add to the staff's presentation.
My name is Andy McLean. I'm with Royal Foundry Craft Spirits. With our development of our site and our use of this land, our vision has always been to be a good neighbor and to not create any sort of major disturbance. Our plan is to do something that will add a lot to the neighborhood. Originally, the land was actually full of truck trailers for well over 10-plus years. Everybody in the neighborhood that I've spoken to have been really receptive and open to what we're going to be doing. And for the most part, it's along the lines of a lot of dynamic establishments throughout Minneapolis. So, and then also, we're complying with our liquor license and complying with all the ordinances dealing with noise and everything that relates to the neighborhood, so.
All right. And Commissioners, are there any questions of the applicant? Hearing none, we can move on to other speakers. And how many of you would like to speak on this item? I know we have at least one, so you can come to the microphone, you can decide who goes first, and come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Go ahead.
Well, Commissioners, thank you for hearing me. My name is Patrick McNautin, and I'm the property owner at 230 Gerard, which is directly adjacent. I have the corner of 2nd Street and Gerard Avenue. I've been either a property owner or business owner in this area for over 20 years. I occupied 230 and 236 at one time. I vacated that building about 10 years ago, but still retain the ownership of 230. And I know and understand the community pretty well. I've seen it evolve and grow. And I want to say that I am definitely an advocate for the Harrison neighborhood, and I love to see what's going on. I think the Royal Foundry people have made a big investment, and I think it's appreciated by the neighborhood and the surrounding businesses. And I also want to thank Erin, who's been my point of contact at the city, for his accessibility and availability in trying to communicate with me prior to this hearing, so that we could try to talk about some of the points that were maybe sticking points. And I think that we definitely moved the needle, so I want to thank him too. So, my goal isn't to get in the way of progress, but being the direct adjacent owner, my building was zoned light industrial, and it was only about five years ago that it was changed to R3. I was pretty upset at that time because it's a commercial, it's a business and being used commercially, and voiced my opinion of the R3 zoning at that time to the council, and it fell on deaf ears. That was the plan at the time. So, I've had that R3 status since then until now. And though the future may change, if I were to build a structure or do something productive with that property today, I would probably be constrained by that zoning, or else I would have to apply for a conditional use myself. I guess a couple of the points that I would like to make today is that I'm concerned about the buffer between the two properties since they share a property line and that I am R3. Respectfully, I'd asked for some sort of barrier. In previous plans, there was only the shrubbery and no fence. They did come forward with a four-foot fence, which I appreciate, but I had requested a six-foot fence since this shares a property line with a potential residential property. This business is, its primary business is in the manufacturing and consumption of alcohol, which is also next to a residence. So, I think having a barrier other than something that can be stepped over would benefit our land, you know, for them to continue to develop and go forward with what they're planning on doing. The other concern that I had had was if in fact this is a residence, to discuss about the noise and the hours of use. I know that they have limited it to 10:00 PM, and I understand that on non-school, non-work nights, that's totally acceptable by me. I had requested something earlier for the other nights if it were a residence and there were workers or children or something who were trying to sleep, along with that are the conditions of the lights and sound and other. I've also talked with Erin Goldstein, the applicant, and some of the other principals with the Foundry, and they're great people. I want to be a great neighbor, but I also need to protect myself and my property rights. So, essentially, I support what they're doing with the exception of having a barrier that will discourage any wandering or trespassing between the two places. I know that the food and beverage consumption is limited to the deck, but the sound isn't defined by the deck if there's cheering and noises. My belief is that these are athletic fields. I mean, it's for soccer leagues, and it's for competitive bike racing. And in Chapter 3, 536.20, an athletic field defines that it should be within 50 feet of a property line and minimize noise and light to the surrounding properties. And my request is more specifically about regulating the time of use and having an adequate boundary so that I don't have trespassing or other things that could happen. Additionally, if I so need to put a fence around the rest of my property because there's some problems in public on the street and around the establishment, if they have a four-foot fence, it doesn't make sense for me to put a six-foot fence up on the other three sides. And again, that's why I came back with the six-foot request tonight. I rest with that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And if there are no questions for the speaker, we can move on to our next speaker, and please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Thank you.
Yeah, hi. My name is Pat Carney. I live at 9 West Franklin, and I own the building at Glenwood and Colfax, 837 Glenwood. And really, I came here just to talk about 1015, or to hear about 1015. But this is a close neighbor of mine, and I am a member of the Redevelopment Oversight Committee for Bassett Creek Valley. And I'm not speaking on their behalf because I didn't know that I was going to talk to this. But we've been enthusiastic about this establishment and what they're doing, and we think that this is great. We love it for the neighborhood. And this corner has, with Beth Grossen's help frankly, is going, has a great deal of potential for Harrison neighborhood and for Bassett Creek Valley, and we're very happy about all of that. The one suggestion that I might have, and really, everything they're doing, I'm good with all of that, but we had discussed several times at The Rock that a four-way stop at that corner would, it was very low traffic up until this establishment went in, and we're glad to see that they're successful. But now, I think that Second and Glenwood, or Second and, and Van White needs a four-way stop. It really seriously does. And there's a lot more traffic than there used to be. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. And is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. And Commissioners, we just have the one application before us, the conditional use permit. Are there any further questions, or would someone like to start things off with a motion? Commissioner Kronzer.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the conditional use permit with the five stated condition and adding a sixth. And that sixth is what Erin handed out here. I'll read it here. A hedge or a fence along the western property line shall be provided to screen the cycle track that will be at least six feet in height and at least 95% opaque.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve Item A, the conditional use permit with the five stated conditions, and adding a sixth related to providing a hedge or fence along the west property line that's at least six feet in height and at least 95% opaque. Any discussion? Commissioner Rockwell.
To my recollection, the Park by my house, Painter Park, the basketball courts have a sign that says, "Please don't play basketball after 10:00 PM." Erin, is that a, 10:00 PM a kind of a common time? My thinking is that that is kind of what we've got throughout the city of Minneapolis, and so 10:00 PM would be consistent.
Yes, that is correct. And I can't speak for the park board, but with our regulations of noise and volume in concerts, that 10:00 PM is often the time threshold.
Okay. And that includes in areas surrounded by residential properties and so forth? That's our go-to?
Yes.
Great. Thanks.
All right. And is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second to approve Item A, the conditional use permit. Clerk, please call the roll.
Colquitt?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Lukey Pierce?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Suezy?
Aye.
8-0.
And that motion carries. That concludes our discussion on Item 2. Our next item for discussion is Item 3, Glenwood Building Expansion. Staff is also Mr. Hanauer.
So, pretty much just a block to the east of the property we spoke about, 1015 Glenwood, you can see both this property that we'll be talking about and the previous one as you go northbound on the Van White Fremont Avenue Bridge. The plan's to renovate the building. There's three parts to this, the renovation of the building, the removal of the sheds at the corner of Glenwood and Colfax, and expansion of a surface parking lot, and then the addition of a fourth floor. There are six applications. CPED's recommending approval of five of the six. Those applications, a conditional use permit for height, four variances of the PO standards, and site plan review. The one variance that SAS recommends denial is to allow the building not to be oriented without one principal entrance facing the public street. And I'll just say with this project and wanting to thank the applicant, I think we've come a long ways in terms of getting to a site plan that you see today, and they have made modifications to come closer to meeting our site plan requirements. So, we want to thank them for that. In regards to the entrance, here's Glenwood Avenue where the cursor is. The west side of the building is where they have, they're proposed to have their main entrance, their new main entrance, and their accessible entrance. And they have building permits to complete that elevator corridor at this location already. What we are recommending is that they do put an entrance that would be facing Glenwood Avenue. And I'm sorry to go, okay. In addition to a walkway that would make it easier for pedestrians to go from the sidewalk to that main entrance. And we're not sure exactly where that bay, where that entrance would be on Glenwood, but just to have a more direct connection for pedestrians. So, in addition to that floor plan, here's the elevation, the west elevation, the proposed accessible entrance, and the main pedestrian entrance, and the Glenwood Avenue elevation accessible entrance and the main pedestrian entrance, and the Glenwood Avenue elevation as proposed. So why we're recommending denial of this application? Few reasons. The purpose of the pedestrian-oriented overlay district is to encourage pedestrian activity and promote street life by regulating building orientation and design. We want to make it easy for pedestrians to travel from wherever that surface parking lot or downtown to get to this building. If you parked on this east side of the building, it could be a long ways to travel to get to the other side. And also just making it, like I said, easy for those traveling in the area. There is previous, this building hasn't been as photographed as many others, but it's a, it is a neighborhood landmark, and there's versions throughout the decades of there being entrances on Glenwood Avenue, albeit not likely accessible, but they have been, they have been there, and those bays have been modified. And the last point I made in, I'll make in this presentation is, you saw a presentation or a proposal for this building a couple of years ago, and within that, there was plans for an entrance on that Glenwood Avenue elevation, and that I believe that their intentions were to have the accessible entrance modifications take place within the building instead of having a large ramp on the outside of the building. So we really feel like it can be done. We know that requiring this may require another accessible entrance on Glenwood Avenue, so that could modify and impact their proposal for the plans. So the conditions of approval that I believe that the applicant would, that takes issue with are, "To comply with Section 53110, building placement, the applicant shall install a principal entrance on the north Glenwood Avenue elevation that is equal or greater importance to the main entrance proposed on the west elevation." And within that, I meant the design of the entrance. They have the side lights, large glass windows, glass within the door. And the other condition, "The applicant shall install a direct walkway from Glenwood Avenue to the staff recommended entrance on Glenwood Avenue intersection that provides a more direct pedestrian connection to the main building entrance. And at a minimum, a painted crosswalk shall be provided through the parking lot." There's a letter of support from the Bassett Creek Valley Redevelopment Oversight Committee, and this project does have to go through PDR, Preliminary Development Review, before final approvals will be had. We encourage the applicant to get there, and they're really close, and I think it's on the agenda to go to PDR, so there might be some slight modifications to the site as well.
Right. And Commissioners, are there any questions of staff? Hearing none, I'll open the public hearing. Commissioner Kronzer.
Aaron, could you, you mentioned two public entrances. Are there any other public entrances to the building proposed?
As far as I'm aware, let's see, the site plan, these, I guess, I don't know from a building code standpoint and if that, what that would trigger for accessibility, but they do have the loading dock that's on the southern portion of the building here. But for pedestrians, the two are all I'm aware of. Thank you.
All right. Any further questions of staff? If there are none, I will open the public hearing on this item. I'd like to ask the applicant to speak first, and please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Carol Lansing. I'm an attorney at Fager Baker Daniels. I'm representing the applicant today. Let's say I'm coming in on sort of a last-minute sub-basis. The architect is ill, so the applicant is here. Hopefully, we can address all, any questions you may have. We are requesting that you grant the variance to allow the building to not have a principal entrance facing Glenwood, and therefore remove Condition 3 to the site plan approval, which is really requiring the same thing, and that you modify Condition Number 4 of the site plan approval related to adding a crosswalk. The main reason why the main entry is shown on the west side of the building is it, because it puts the main entry in close proximity to the elevator stair and restroom locations and to the ADA accessible entrance. It is also, would we use, excuse me, a loading dock, a historic loading dock on the building? So just to kind of go over, this one might be better, go over the entries. This would be the main entrance on a historic loading dock and can walk up to it from the corner of the building. The ADA entry that comes in at ground level comes in back here. And then the elevator core is right here. And this, the location of this is based on an existing structural shaft that was in the building and has been approved by the city. And that is the location where the elevator and stair shaft was going to be for the school as well. But when it was going to be a single-user school, if you had a main entry here and the kind of controlled access that you have to schools, the people who'd be coming to this building, teachers, students, and parents, would be familiar with how to wind their way through the building to get back there. But that's not really a practical location or, you know, route to have a main entrance up on Glenwood and then expect visitors to the building to easily traverse the building to get back there. It also would separate a main entrance from the ADA entrance, and it's best, better designed for those to be in close proximity to each other. So the school proposal is not going forward because there was significant opposition and concern in the neighborhood about putting that type of a use on the Glenwood commercial corridor, and the applicant now has shifted gears and, on a speculative basis, is moving forward with renovation of this building for commercial use. So they don't know who the tenant will be. They don't know if it'll be a single-building tenant like the school. They think it's most likely it will be multiple tenants. And as I noted, for multiple-tenant uses, having two main entries is confusing. Having a main entry far from the elevator core is also confusing. There are, we believe, findings to support granting of the requested variance. What we propose as findings are that practical difficulties exist in placing a main multi-tenant entrance facing Glenwood because of the elevation of the existing first floor. It is above grade. It would require accessibility, but also, we're going to continue to need to have that entrance by the existing elevator shaft. And so the location of the structure where facilities are in the building just is a practical difficulty. We believe the proposed main entry location is reasonable as an adaptive reuse of an old industrial building, and it can be sufficiently identified in terms of its locations with signage. And the variance wouldn't change the existing character of locality because this is the existing character of this building. And there will be replacement of existing glass block windows with clear glass, which will increase visibility into and out of the building, which was noted by staff as another concern. Now, if the variance is denied, if it's granted, as I said, we'd need to also request elimination of Condition 3 to the site plan review. But if it's denied, if you do believe that it's important to have an entrance to Glenwood, we are requesting that the Condition Number 3 be modified to eliminate that the entrance needs to be of equal or greater importance. That's vague. It's subjective. It's going to be very hard to apply. I think it would lead to confusion, as I indicated, because there's still going to need to be that main entrance in the southwest corner. If there are going to be entries into Gerard, they're most likely to be individual tenant entries, so they're not the kind that you would consider to be of equal importance. There might actually end up being more than one on Gerard when you know who the tenant mix is. So we think it's important that even with denial of the variance, that you not try to balance the importance of these entries. And that is beyond what the code requires. The code requires a principal entrance unless you get alternative compliance or variance. It doesn't require that the most important one be facing a public street. And then, as I noted, we'd like to modify the condition for a pedestrian pathway, second one. This is what I had in mind, that a connection be from the sidewalk to the northeast corner. There's an existing sidewalk that goes out to the parking. It's the shortest distance through the parking lot. It does spread the, these pedestrian pathways. We have one that complies with the standard over here, so the standard's met. This would be in addition, the way the, you know, coming from any further over here from Colfax would go through more parking. And as I said, we don't know where the entrances will be, so it, I think this serves a better purpose to the building than just going to one particular entrance. So those are our requests. If you have any questions, let me know.
Right. And Commissioner Lukey-Pear, then Commissioner Kronzer.
Sir, I apologize.
Oh, Commissioner Kronzer.
Did you say this project had gone through PDR or is about to go through PDR?
Uh, Commissioner Kronzer said about to.
Okay, so the Construction Code Services has not provided any feedback.
And they, in many cases, provide limited feedback with Preliminary Development Review, but I did have a discussion with one of the building plan reviewers to discuss when accessible requirements are triggered. And I provided that page from the building code in your staff report attachments.
My understanding is the school project was not going to demolish the, sorry, was not going to demolish the metal sheds and the other two buildings additions that are going to be demolished, and it wasn't adding that parking area. So it wasn't required to get the site plan review or, and it wasn't going to add a fourth floor, so it wasn't required to go through site plan review or to get all these variances. So work has been done on the building with the idea of, if we're just renovating this building, they got building permit review of the elevator and the stairwell and where the restrooms would be before they came forward with these applications that now will require PDR because of the addition in the parking lot.
So is the elevator and stairs in the, called the southwest corner of the building, are those newly constructed or in the process of being newly constructed?
They're in the process. There was an existing large shaft that was there, and the elevator and the stairs and the bathrooms could all fit in there. It was two stories, and it's been extended in height, and the elevators bought and ready to be put in.
Okay. Last question. If I'm in a wheelchair and I take the bus and I get off here, how do I wheel to this So the answer is you have to go through the parking lot to do that?
It looks like it.
So to me, that's not acceptable, but we can...
Well, yeah, so, I mean, certainly, they can look at sidewalk connections. The ADA entrance is near where the accessible parking would be. But you're right, I don't know that they, how much they considered people on, from the bus.
That Carol was talking about, just to, we recognize the building placement of where it's at is it, that you're going to have to traverse through, or you have to go through the parking lot if you're in a wheelchair.
No, the parking lot and the building not having main entries on the front are existing conditions. It just hasn't been used in the way it's going to be used.
Commissioner Schrader, then Commissioner Lukey-Pear.
I'd like to kind of expand on those. Those are my concerns as well. I mean, I get that this is an adaptive reuse of it, but to hear that the elevator is being made now, and the argument is that we need to have the entrance be where the elevator is, but your building where the elevator is now. I'd love to hear a little bit more, if there's been some thought to maybe moving the elevator, knowing that ideally, we have something that have an entrance on the avenue, Glenwood. Does that make sense?
Yeah. I mean, I think if, excuse me, you know, I think you could talk about having an accessible entrance on the Glenwood side without it being the major entrance and saying that you have to have the main entrance. I think that's, you know, we could address accessibility to say have an accessible route to the building without going through the parking lot is different than saying you have to have a main entrance there.
Okay. And I think that's, that gets to my point exactly. It's, because I know we have to be creative, like this is what it is, and building costs are what they are, we need to be really smart about that. I think I would have liked to see a little bit more, knowing that, you know, there's a very large parking lot before the street, knowing that we would want some kind of pedestrian area. If there could be more done with landscaping or something, just take this opportunity to do more with that area, even though I know that we have, we're set with the building. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Commissioner Lukey-Pear.
Yeah, Carol, so when you were testifying earlier, you mentioned about the school is not probably going to be, is this school for sure not a tenant, or is there still a possibility for this to be a charter school or any school of that nature?
That's, that's not the plan anymore.
Hey, sorry, Ned Abdul, I'm Swirbo, we're the applicant. So basically, the, we went, we were in front of this planning commission six months ago on this, on a school application, which got ultimately approved, and we were moving forward that road. After that application, we got a lot of pushback from the neighborhood groups, the council member, the surrounding council member, and we thought to reevaluate that and look at it regardless of the approvals. So sure, we are, you know, charter schools are hard to place in this city, as I'm sure you guys know. It's, it would have still been an option. That's not the direction that we're going. The reason why this building was attractive to charter schools was because of this big warehouse, you know, this big, on the, I guess it would be the, it would be the east side, the east side of the building, and which they were ultimately going to renovate into a gym, you know, as a high warehouse that will allow them to do that. With this proposal, we're tearing that down and turning that into surface parking because we need the additional parking if we're gonna, if we're gonna go for an office use. So, I mean, technically, it would still be part of the approvals, but that's not the direction we're going anymore.
Okay, because I would just have really serious concerns about the drop-off, pickup, bus stacking, all those things in regard to where the entrance is currently shown. If it were to become a school, I would think we'd almost need to revisit, regardless of what happens today in approval process, but I just think that for, absolutely, I mean, I'm glad to hear that it's probably not likely, but it's still, knowing that it's possibly on the table in the future, is kind of giving me pause, so.
Correct. And that was the reason why the entrance was put in the front, just for that specific reason with the, with the bus drop-off and so on. I mean, I think what, a couple of the questions that some of the commissioners had asked Carol, that maybe she wasn't totally privy on, is, I mean, regardless whether there's a door on Glenwood or the front, the door is on the, on the side where we're proposing, I mean, you, because of the setback of the existing building, we're going to have to create some type of crosswalk and stuff, which I think staff is proposing somewhere through the parking lot. You know, this building is three and a half feet above grade, so, I mean, to do an exterior ramp, you're talking about a 70-foot ramp, and the building's only, you know, 85, 90 feet wide. So it would, you know, it would be very difficult, you know, to make this one-on-twenty swollop without really impacting the elevation of the building, et cetera.
Commissioner Kronzer.
Yeah, so this building reminds me a lot of the warehouses on First Avenue North. And if you're familiar with those, which I know most of us are, and some of us might own them, the strategy to solve this problem is to put an entrance at grade level into, into the building and then provide stairs, either a short lift or a ramp inside of the building to modulate that three to four-feet shift difference. If we did this here, there would be no need to move the elevators. You would simply provide an accessible entrance on the north facade of the building, provide lift inside the building, and provide connection to the elevator, as every other building, warehouse building in downtown does.
And that's kind of what was done with this elevator, this elevator core. It stops at grade, and then it stops a half, three feet up at the lobby level. So that was kind of the thought process. You know, this isn't a very large floor plate, and that was our reason that originally, we tried to take advantage of this additional addition that was built on the rear, to try to, you know, to try to use that, that area for this vertical transportation and the, and the form of egress. You know, ultimately, this is a commercial corridor, and we'd ultimately like to see retail, you know, on this corridor. And my other concern about putting the main entrance of the building on Glenwood is, you know, to, based on where this core is now, is, you know, we would somehow have to bifurcate this floor, and whether it's on this cycle, you know, of tenancy or the next cycle of tenancy, eventually, if this corridor does what we all think it's going to do, it's going to be a retail corridor, and it's going to limit who we can put on that main level if we bifurcate it in half.
So why couldn't this corridor be along the western edge of the building inside?
So if you just, the main entrance, would you just create an accessible entrance?
Well, you're, you could probably still leave your accessible entrance where it is, and we just end up losing, you know, to create a ramp. And your ramp would be as wide as the building. This building is 80 feet deep. Your ramp would have to be a 70, 60, 70-foot ramp. I mean, I'm sure you could do a... I mean, I'm sure you could do a switchback, and, but it just would be, you would have to pretty much cut up half the, you know, the whole first floor would end up having to be modified.
Sure. Well, you could use a lift instead of a ramp. And then, two, have you had conversations about the building code requirement that sixty percent of your public entrances need to be accessible?
Yes.
Because this doesn't meet that. If you have two entrances, you need two accessible entrances.
Right now...
Sixty percent captures both of those entrances.
Correct. And right now, we, we are, we are, there is, the only other entrance on this building is a form of egress on Colfax, what's being proposed today. So, I don't think that, that one does not need to be accessible.
What you have is a long, the, the, the loading dock is all stairs, and then you have the ADA entrance on the southwest corner. That's two entrances, and only one of them is accessible. That doesn't meet building code.
I think the way that the, and then, like I said, we already have a permit for this from, for, you know, from a, from a base building standpoint for this work, um, pre this application for, you know, modifying the building a little additionally. So, I believe that they looked at these two entrances, uh, the, the one with the stairs and the one next to it as one. I, I just believe that's the way that they looked at it from a historic standpoint.
All right. Any other questions of the applicant? If there are none, uh, we can see if there's anyone else who'd like to speak on this item. And yes, you can come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, hi, my name is Pat Garni again, uh, and I own West Franklin, and I own the building across the street from this, from this, um, uh, from, from, uh, this, uh, this address. And I was one of the really, uh, strong voices against the previous, uh, usage of this building, and I, I really want to say that I really thank these people for listening to the neighborhood and our vision of what this neighborhood is, hopefully, will be. And, uh, and, and, and we're, we're very, we're really enthusiastic, and we're really happy that, that, with the changes that made. I know that the, that the, that the entrance issue is thorny, and it certainly is way above my pay grade, but everything else that's going on here, we are really enthusiastic about, uh, what Mr. Abdul is doing and, and with the fact that this is, this is going to be one of those little steps up for Glenwood Avenue and, and with what we hope to see Glenwood becoming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. And Commissioners, we have several, a total of six applications before us. Are there any further questions, or would someone like to start things off with a motion? Commissioner Kronzer.
I'll start us off with a motion. I'll, I'll move approval of the conditional use permit with the one stated condition.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve Item A, the conditional use permit with the one stated condition. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Kogil?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Lukey-Peer?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Sweetsie?
Aye.
Eight-zero.
And that motion carries. Commissioner Kronzer.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Item B, the variance for the PO district setback increase with the two stated conditions. Uh, Item C, the variance of the PO district to increase the street furniture accessory surface parking lot, and Item D, the variance for the PO district to allow the accessory street parking lot in the front of our principal building.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve Items B, C, and D. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Kogil?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Lukey-Peer?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Sweetsie?
Aye.
Eight-zero.
And that motion carries. Commissioner Kronzer.
I'd like to make a motion to deny the variance for the PO district, restricting the potential entrance location, not at the front of the building.
Second.
And we have a motion and a second to deny Item E, the variance of the PO standards for a principal entrance location. Is there any discussion? Commissioner Kronzer?
I think we had, uh, the, the guts of this conversation earlier. I think this is a developing corridor. It's great to see the reuse of this building, but, uh, in my opinion, in my professional opinion, this building, this proposal doesn't meet the building code, first of all, and we can do better from an accessibility standpoint. These changes, um, required are not that drastic to this building.
Commissioner Lukey-Peer.
Yeah, I would second that. I think from an accessibility and wayfinding standpoint, 'cause, um, it's not always about just fitting through a doorway, but it's about being able to get to an entrance and visually recognizing it. Um, the fact that the existing location's only two stories tall, so they have to modify it. Anyway, it seems to me a minor change more than any, a, a situation where there's an existing, uh, situation that's just being utilized, so I will support the motion.
All right. So, we have a motion and a second to deny Item E, the variance of the pedestrian-oriented district standards. Any further discussion? And hearing none, clerk, please call a roll.
Kogil?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Lukey-Peer?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Sweetsie?
Aye.
Eight-zero.
And that motion carries. And Commissioner Kronzer.
I'd like to make a motion to approve site plan review with the seven stated conditions and add, and add the following to number three. Including but not limited to doors with glass, side lights, and a canopy.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve Item F, the site plan review with the seven stated conditions, including a modification to Condition 3. Is there any discussion?
Just the, the addition, there's to clarify, um, the ambiguity of what that, that condition would be.
Okay. Yes. And Commissioner Rockwell.
A question on, um, for staff. Do, do we know what, how we define principal entrance? I mean, I assume, uh, that our additional language here, greater in importance, equal or greater in importance, is a reaction to some unfortunate past principal entrances, which were then just blocked entrances. So, um, you know, we're trying to make up for, for a mis, um, interpretation of that term. Do, do we have a definition of, of that term in, in a way that would...
I don't think it, it, we do have an explicit definition. And I, my intent wasn't to go, you know, it was to be, to provide some specifics in giving guidance and not to go above and beyond or something beyond what, what we were requiring.
Is a principal entrance required to serve all tenants in a building?
No.
No, so one could have an entrance that serves, or you could conceivably have a ground floor tenant in this building, uh, they, they fill a full ground floor, a full footprint. The entrance on the Glenwood side would enter just into that tenant's space, and then tenants on the upper floors would enter on the other entrance.
Yes.
Got it.
They can do that.
Okay.
All right. Is there any further discussion? So, we have a motion and a second to approve Item F, seven stated conditions, modification to Condition Number 3. If there's no further discussion, clerk, please call a roll.
Kogil?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Lukey-Peer?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Sweetsie?
Aye.
Eight-zero.
And that motion carries. That concludes our discussion on Item 3. I also wanted to note, on Item 8, uh, there was an addendum in our packet, uh, that involved a modification to Condition 6, so I will just note for the record that we'll accept that addendum. And, uh, under Commission updates tonight, we, uh, will select our officers for 2019, and we had a nominating committee that included Commissioners Lukey-Peer, Sweetsie, and Kogil. And, uh, would one of you like to provide an update? Commissioner Sweetsie.
Thank you, President Brown. Yes, the nominating committee met, and we, uh, reported at Committee of the Whole two weeks ago, and, uh, the candidates, uh, that we recommend are all, um, unopposed, and for president, it is Commissioner Rockwell, for vice president, Commissioner Lukey-Peer, and for secretary, Commissioner Coleman, who I, I see is not here tonight. But, um, those are the parties that expressed interest in, uh, those positions.
All right. And I will take that as a motion to appoint those officers. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. Congratulations to our new officers. I am especially excited to pass the baton, so I'll look forward to, uh, moving down the dais and, uh, and voting once again, so we can look forward to that at our next meeting in April. So, uh, our next meeting is April 15th. We have Committee of the Whole this Thursday, and we are adjourned.